Oh, she's here, all right. I'd like to call this meeting in order, and if I could ask everybody to rise for the pledge of allegiance, and in honor of Kristen McCarthy-Wehhe's last regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting, if you could lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sherri, you're on. This has been a time-honored tradition where former First Selectmen Sherri Stenick brings us Wednesday's pet.
This is Gramps. Gramps is about nine years old, huge Shepherd mix, and he likes to get petted. He is over at One Rod Highway. He's neutered, what, $5?
Yes.
You should pick him up, and he's great for anybody who doesn't want to be running after a puppy, so I could say there's great advantages to that, given I have a year-old dog. So, please come and adopt him. Come on, Gramps.
All right, is there a number to call?
Number to call.
254-4857.
254-4857.
Great company for an older person, too.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we're going to jump into some special recognition. As many of you know, Kristen McCarthy-Wehhe won election as state rep from the 132nd, 3rd, 133rd district, and so she'll be leaving us. So, we have a couple of things we'd like to do. First off, we want to make sure that even though the time of year isn't quite right, that she leaves here with a springtime feel. So, from Selectmen Kylie and myself, there you go.
Thank you.
We're not done yet. People here in Washington home are most likely to be aware of the invaluable contributions you have made to the Board of Selectmen over the past three years as Selectmen for the Town of Fairfield. But what many people don't know is how much time and effort you have dedicated to our other 40-plus boards and commissions. You have worked diligently and successfully to recruit new and fresh talent for so many of our boards. You have served faithfully as the Selectman representative to the Water Pollution Control Authority, and probably learned more than you ever wanted to know about wastewater treatment. Last year, you worked with our Ethics Commission to plan and hold our first ethics workshop for all elected and appointed officials at Fairfield University to raise awareness on potential ethical conflicts. The workshop was very successful and was attended by over 100 town officials. You've worked with YASAP, our local prevention council, and our Fairfield Cares Task Force on Alcohol and Health to consolidate and create Fairfield Cares Community Coalition in a single powerhouse of citizen educators and leaders who advocate tirelessly for health and well-being of our town's youth. You currently co-chair this coalition, and I understand you'll continue to serve in that capacity. And last but certainly not least, you have put in countless hours working passionately with our bicycle and pedestrian committees, both the temporary committee and, most recently, the new permanent committee. In large part due to your leadership and dedication, the Fairfield Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan was approved by the town bodies, and the ribbon was cut on Fairfield's first bike route last summer, in which you ride by bike, as I remember. This was a huge accomplishment and a major step forward toward healthier living in Fairfield. So, as Kevin and I contemplated how best and most appropriately to thank you for your efforts on behalf of the board, our residents and our volunteers, we decided to have a small bronze plaque installed in front of the new town bicycle rack by Chef's Table, one of your favorite destinations. This plaque will read as follows. "The Town of Fairfield thanks and appreciates the dedicated service of Selectman Kristen McCarthy-Wehhe, December 17, 2014. It is our hope that you will always think of us when you ride, walk, or run in town, whether it's to shop..." Keep shopping. Spend those state dollars down here. "Pick up some takeout for your family or meet a constituent for lunch. And more importantly, we hope the residents and visitors will recognize and appreciate, as we do, your passionate dedication to the Town of Fairfield. We can't wait to see what you will do up in Hartford." Thank you for everything. We also have a small card.
I thought maybe jokes, since I don't want to start crying.
Do you do? That would be a good time.
I do. Did you have a comment? I'm sorry.
No, go.
Yeah. Thank you for Selectman Tacho for your fine comments about our colleague Kristen. And I just want to briefly add, in addition to agreeing with every word that he spoke, I just want to briefly add my personal thanks to Kristen for her leadership throughout our town, in her neighborhood, and more specifically on this board. You have done just a wonderful job at balancing the needs of our town versus the needs of our neighborhoods, and how this board can make Fairfield a greater place than it already used to be. And I just can't thank you enough for everything you've done, and how you have conducted yourself at this board and at every level, for every board that you volunteer for. And Fairfield, Connecticut is a much better place today because of you. Thank you.
Excellent. And it is probably appropriate that you have a chance for rebuttal.
I was counting on Selectman Kylie to maybe, you know, joke around a little bit, so I'm going to start crying instead of laughing. And I want to just say thank you to both of you. I did ask Mike at the last meeting, or after the last meeting, if I could have just a few minutes, and I was kind of reflecting back on when I started out on the RTM. My very first vote on the RTM was an emergency appropriation for Tomlinson Middle School, which was under construction and needed some extra funds to be finished. And then when I started at the Board of Selectmen, my very first meeting with then-Selectman Walsh at the time, we were having a special meeting for the Metro Center, the train station, so unforeseen circumstances. And now to today, where we have the tremendous opportunity to celebrate two amazing Fairfielders, our Employee of the Year and our Fairfielder of the Year. And I guess in between, thinking back, everything from WPCA, as Mike mentioned, to green energy projects. I actually saw Mr. Bowman on the way in, and he's wearing a green shirt today. I was so happy to see that, to appointing so many tremendous volunteers, which has been an amazing privilege to meet so many amazing people, and supporting our schools and libraries, our public health and safety, and our nonprofit partners, as we've talked about here. And I feel proud of all those things and incredibly grateful. And I think grateful especially to the two gentlemen here and to Selectman Walsh as well, because there are always going to be unforeseen circumstances, right? I guess that's life. Life is unforeseen. And for me, it's not just about where we've come, but how we've gotten there. And I feel grateful to have been part of a board with two gentlemen who have been just amazing in terms of how we have been able to have conversations where we haven't always agreed, you know? Among our votes have gone differently at different times, but the fact that we are able to do so with respect and civility and kindness even, I am so grateful for that, and I hope that, and I know that that will continue here. I'm excited for you as you move forward. You may be seeing me on to other places, but as I've said to our First Selectmen, I'm not going far, and you're not getting rid of me that easily. So, thank you so, so much for all those kind words, and for the honor and privilege of being able to serve with you. It truly is.
Thank you.
And the flowers.
Yes, well, thank you. And we did move that up early, just in case she does cry, we all want to catch that on camera. The, Kevin, with your permission and Kristen with yours, we're going to skip over the minutes for just a moment and go to some of our special recognition.
Absolutely.
And with that as a start, we now have the honor to announce our Board of Selectmen Employee of the Year Award winner. We move to a very special Board of Selectmen tradition. Each year, we are proud to receive nominations from town and school employees and people throughout our community for Outstanding Employee and Fairfielder of the Year. I want to thank all the people who sent in nominations for this award. I would like to thank the committee who selected the top three candidates for Employee of the Year. Thank you to Holly Lanese, Ed Crowley, and Nancy Frey. The primary criteria for the award are service and job performance that goes beyond the daily work of the individual and that benefits the Fairfield government and community. Such basic criteria includes but is not limited to performance excellence, reliability, and dependability, initiative, integrity, judgment, cooperation in spirit, outstanding public service, and unique contributions to improve government services. And we are proud to announce this year's winner is Craig Kimball. Craig, if you would, come on up to the podium. We have a little something for you. I'd also like to recognize his three nominators, Tom DeBrowski, Juliana Harris, and Bill Hurley, and give them an opportunity to say something if they'd like at this point.
Sure, I will.
Mr. Hurley, fresh from presentations on sidewalks.
Yes. My definition of Employee of the Year, by the way, congratulations, is an employee that will help the public, or as many employees throughout town as much as possible, and not just a special group or a certain department. Craig has helped all departments in town. Employee of the Year must be willing to go beyond the typical working hours and come through in the clutch or at a moment's notice. Craig was always available and personally helped me a dozen times after hours when I had computer issues. And finally, the Employee of the Year should promote teamwork and boost morale. Craig has provided enthusiasm in the workplace by promoting football games and sponsoring or organizing that 375th birthday Whiffle Ball Tournament. So, I think the committee made an excellent choice in naming Craig the Employee of the Year.
Thank you.
Putting all that aside, I've been employed by the town for 14 years, and this year Craig got the Whiffle Ball Tournament established, and it was the first time the town employees, fire department, and police, we were all together, and it was special, and it was all because of this guy.
Yeah. Juliana, you meant you were all together and losing to DPW?
Exactly. This is the bag.
All right. Mr. DeBrowski, here.
I'm only here a year, not 14. And within that one year, I have called upon him thousands of times to get me out of trouble. Okay, so as far as a teamwork, a team player, taking the initiative, going one step beyond that, all right, being there when we need him, even when he's very, very busy, okay? And if he can't make it, he explains why, and he gives you a time when he can show up. So, there's no finer person, I think, in the IT, coming out and working for everybody in the whole town, all right, showing initiative, intelligence, brightness, and teamwork. Thank you.
All right. We have a little something for you in honor. Congratulations again.
Thank you, sir.
And here, and do you all want to speak now or after?
After Craig, I guess.
The, do you want to say a few words?
I would love to. I am thrilled to be able to be a part of honoring you today. I, probably within the first couple of weeks of being elected as a Selectman, I can remember calling and talking with you multiple times on the phone, and after hours that you were willing to take phone calls, and just you have always been so incredibly supportive, not just to me, but to everyone. That's what we're hearing from everyone. But you're also your whole spirit. You just have an incredible sense about you, and it's a real gift to all of us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Craig, congratulations from all of us, and I want to thank you for your service to our town, your hard work, your dedication, and your enthusiasm for providing the IT support across the entire town. And it's, you know, thanks to guys like Bill and Tom and guys like me that always have problems with their phones and their computers, that you get these calls, and the fact that you're responsive to them and you help them out and you guide them through that is very valuable to everyone, and I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
And simply, I think everybody's heard now that Craig is available kind of after hours on weekends. You've seen enough people, so for, think about our residents, that Craig is personally responsible for us not having to say, "I'll wait till Monday to solve your problem," all right? So, he may not have solved it, but he's solved the problem for the people that have to solve the problem. So, that's been huge. And if I had to pick one example of what, that epitomizes Craig's approach to this, he came to me and said, "You know, Whiffle Ball was invented in Fairfield. We should do something about it." And I said, "Great idea. What?" And Craig said, "We should have a Whiffle Ball Tournament, and we should get the town involved." And he came up with a Whiffle Ball Tournament, laid it out, got bats and balls donated by the Whiffle Ball Company that's now located in Shelton, no longer in Fairfield, and got four departments in town to come together, the field teams, to hold the first annual Fairfield Whiffle Ball Tournament. So, thank you for leaving a lasting impression on all of us.
Thank you.
He's not going away from town, by the way. He did take another job for the police force, so we're not sure they're ever going to let him back over here for all that. But would you like to say a few words?
No, I'd just like to say thank you, and it's been really a pleasure trying to help everybody solve their problems in town. Do I have flowers, too?
Inside, it's a very small bouquet. Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, with that as a start, we move on. For the 2014 Board of Selectmen Fairfielder of the Year Award, I want to thank everybody who sent in nominations. I want to thank the committee who selected the top three candidates in no particular order. The committee is made up of Judge Dan Caruso, former Selectman Kathleen Howard, and Harvey Sussman. The primary criteria for this award are personal time, energy, talent of service to the residents of Fairfield and/or society in general that promotes and improves the life and vitality of our town. Such basic criteria include outstanding volunteer commitments that benefit an individual, group, or an entire community at Fairfield, unique achievements that benefit our community, model citizen who reflects the positive values of the Town of Fairfield, exceptional personal qualities including leadership, initiative, reliability, dependability, integrity, and cooperation in spirit. And we are proud to announce this year's winner is Peter Penzer. You're entirely welcome. Thank you for everything you've done. Your nominators, just so you know, were David Gorbak and Sherri Stenick. And would David or Sherri like to say a few words?
It's on the podium, though. Oh, okay.
It's on the podium.
Well, just in case, I don't want to yell.
You're kind of new to the sport of selectmen stuff, huh?
I am. I've forgotten everything. It's wonderful. I've, you know, I've had heard about Peter Penzer for decades, and it wasn't until about 1997, when I was Director of Community and Economic Development, that I ran the Economic Development Committee, and Peter was on it at that time, so I got to know him very well at that point. Little did I know that I'd have a number of other boards that I'd worked with him on and over the years, and all I can say is Peter is one of the most generous people I've ever met. And I don't mean generosity just in terms of money, I mean generosity of spirit, generosity of money, too, but generosity of time. He gives his time to a number of different boards. He's been, I wrote it all on there, and I apologize that I didn't bring it up front with me, but he's been on the Holocaust Commemoration Committee with me, Economic Development Committee, the Theater Company, there must be 10, 20 different groups there, International Institute of Connecticut, and I just can't begin to tell you how many times somebody said, "You know, we need this," and no matter when, over the course of the last 30 years, somebody will say, "Well, you know, ask Peter." And I've never had a time when somebody hasn't asked Peter and Peter hasn't produced. So, I couldn't think of a better person to receive this, and I'm honored that you took it.
Is David here?
Yes.
Thank you very much, David.
I get choked up, too. It's not just women that get emotional. I had the pleasure of first hearing about Peter. I'm almost 60. When I was 18 years old, my father, who was a real estate broker in Fairfield, came and started talking, talked about work often, and he talked about a young attorney that he had met, and West Point graduate, Yale Law School, one of the finest people, brightest that he knew, and of course, Peter's standing next to me today. Most of you know about all the activities with which Peter is involved, much more so than I. On a personal note, we do business together, and we handle his commercial real estate in Fairfield. I can't tell you how many times I had somebody for one of his spaces, and he said, "Well, it's not available right now. I've let the Democratic Town Committee use it. I'm letting the Fairfield Museum use it for storage. I'm letting Dress for Success use the space." And it's just, it's so nice to see somebody that puts personal profit aside to help the community. And I'm sure we all have different experiences with Peter, and just professionally, no one better, and a word that is very rarely used today is gentleman, and Peter is a gentleman.
Did I see Lynn Penzer in back?
She's not here.
She's not?
I don't think. Oh, there she is.
Lynn, officially, thank you for sharing Peter with us. All right? Peter, we do have something for you.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm going to do the crying for Kristen.
I'll cry, I will.
Here you go, and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Either of you care to add something?
I just want to say, Peter, thank you. I've known you for many years, and thank you and to your family for sharing yourself with us and for volunteering to our town, and for making our town a much, a much greater place to live. I mean, your spirit, your dedication, your integrity are noticed across our town, and we very much appreciate that, so thank you very much.
It's so true, and what David said, that you are such a gentleman in every sense of the word, and I, integrity was another word that I was thinking when Mike read the kind of the background for the award. It's just amazing, and I am grateful. We have some young people in the room who have joined us, and you're an example to them in terms of sharing all the gifts that you've been given to make our community such a stronger, better place. We're very, very blessed to have you here.
Thank you very much.
And Peter, while you spent most of your time on the development side of things, I really didn't get to know Peter on the business side, but I got to know him through Rotary, where he's contributed a lot of his time to help make our community better in so many ways, but also as one of the people that was involved initially in getting the Fairfield Theater Company off the ground, which has had an unbelievable impact for all of us, not only culturally, but on the economics of our town and specifically our downtown area. And they are going gangbusters, and you were there to get it off the ground, so thank you in so many ways.
Thank you very much.
All right? Would you care to say a few words?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Well, thank you very much to everybody, and the fact is, is that I really have to give credit to all of the people who've worked with me and actually done the work. I've just run around and in my, you know, I feel I've just run around, but people have done, in all of the organizations that we've been talking about, have done actually an incredible amount of work, and the credit really belongs to them, but I'm going to take this home and keep it, so that to remind me of them and all that they've done. And I will also say that I can still remember the day many years ago, some of you may remember my father, and he told me that the town has been good to you, you have to be good to the town. And my wife has been very supportive of all that. I'm running around all the time, and so there you are. And I will remember all those people with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Craig still here?
Yes, sir.
Craig, if we can get, Kylie, so can I actually come back on this side?
Absolutely.
This is the plaque that will be inscribed with the names of this year's winners, and if I can get the three of us up here and Craig on one side. Peter, you stand together, please.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
You know this Twitter world?
And maybe a little closer together.
Yeah, that's great.
I know. All right, same winners.
Jen?
No, it's okay.
Keep going, I'm done.
Jen, if you could take a picture with Kristen, it's a color.
Yeah.
All right, thank you all, and a special thanks to our winners for the contributions they've made to our town and our community, not only in the past, but also in the years ahead. So, again, thank you both for all of that. We should go back to minutes, go back to item four on our agenda. To consider and act upon the minutes of, shall we take these together? You want to take them one at a time?
Together's fine.
That's good.
Special meeting November 25, 2014, regular meeting December 3, 2014, and special meeting December 9, 2014. Have a motion to accept?
Some vote.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or adjustments? Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, wow, you keep popping up on the agenda. Item six, resignations from the Water Pollution Control Authority, Kristen McCarthy-Wehhe, Democrat, 1625 Melville Avenue, that Kristen has been the Board of Selectmen representative on this. Do you have any parting comments?
Oh, I just want to say good luck to Kevin. Actually, the WPCA is a really important body. It is. Joe's here, and it's, we all laugh about it, but it's serious business, and I'm really glad that Kevin will be serving on that. I also, if I may, my, a few members of my family have joined us here, and I just want to say thank you to them as well, because as everyone in this room who is involved in public service knows, it is a family endeavor.
Well, since I won't be here to do this again, I always like to take the opportunity to say thank you. And I don't know if Mr. Braun is not here.
Mr. Braun is not here. He had appointments that ran late tonight, so he was unable to make it.
Well, thank you to him for his service on this board. Another important board. I do see Mr. Therry in the back, so, thank you.
Kevin, any follow-up comments?
No.
I would also just say thank you. It's, you know, it's sometimes tough enough to get people to volunteer a first time. It's absolutely thrilling that they will stay around and be reappointed for two reasons. We don't have to find somebody else. And second, we get to use the experience that they developed in the first term to help us guide our boards in the second term. And as anybody who's served on a board, you know you add much more value the second time around than the first time around, just because you're so much more knowledgeable about the issues and what's taking place. May I, are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two, to hear, consider and act upon the following reappointment. Historic District Commission, this one requires RTM approval. Adam Cliver, Republican, 280 Hillside Road, for a term of 1114 to 1118. May I have a motion to accept?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion?
Well, since I won't be here to do this again, I always like to take the opportunity to say thank you. And I don't know if Mr. Braun is not here.
Mr. Braun is not here. He had appointments that ran late tonight, so he was unable to make it.
Well, thank you to him for his service on this board. Another important board. I do see Mr. Therry in the back, so, thank you.
Kevin, any follow-up comments?
No.
I would also just say thank you. It's, you know, it's sometimes tough enough to get people to volunteer a first time. It's absolutely thrilling that they will stay around and be reappointed for two reasons. We don't have to find somebody else. And second, we get to use the experience that they developed in the first term to help us guide our boards in the second term. And as anybody who's served on a board, you know you add much more value the second time around than the first time around, just because you're so much more knowledgeable about the issues and what's taking place. May I, are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two, to hear, consider and act upon the following reappointment. Historic District Commission, this one requires RTM approval. Adam Cliver, Republican, 280 Hillside Road, for a term of 1114 to 1119. And Christopher Shea, not the former congressman, Republican, 917 Merwin's Lane, for a term of 1114 to 1119. May I have a motion to accept?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? I've had a, I will kick, add in that I've had a chance to talk extensively with Mr. Cliver and Mr. Shea about the Historic District Commission, its role in our town, potential opportunities for being more proactive in terms of what we can offer our residents and citizens to help preserve our character and heritage. Having just made a trip over Thanksgiving weekend down to Charleston, South Carolina, I was very impressed with that community has done to maintain their heritage over the last 150 to 200 years, realizing that when you go back, Charleston was the fourth largest city in colonial America after Philadelphia, Boston, and New York. And I think there's opportunities for us to learn from communities like that in terms of preserving our heritage and respecting our history. So, I thoroughly enjoyed those conversations. Any further comments? Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Human Services Commission, to hear, consider and act upon the following appointment, reappointment. Nancy Legere, Democrat, 245 Unco Row, for a term of 1114 to 1118. May I have a motion to accept?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion?
I would love to. I see Nancy in the back. And I just want to say thank you. The Human Services Commission has done quite a bit of work over the past few years in terms of advocating, not only for our seniors in the senior center, but also for folks with disabilities. And I think has broadened even more the view on that commission. And I am very grateful for your advocacy and your work in that area.
Nancy, thank you for your service. I thank you for volunteering to serve again for us. Appreciate that.
Also, I've had a chance to talk a lot with Nancy and I think she brings a very valuable perspective to our board, both for the residents and for the town overall. And it's always a tough balancing act between the two. I think that we've seen a lot of activity and new initiatives on the senior set of things over the last few years. And Nancy and I had a chance to talk a bit about the social services side, which is another opportunity for improvement for our town. And there are things that we need to do better there and we'll continue to learn from other communities and partner better with our not-for-profits elsewhere in town to do that. Any further discussion or comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Nancy, congratulations.
Thank you.
And since you are here, would you care to say a few words?
Not really. I just got that down.
If you're going to say or not say anything, you need to say it from the mic.
I just returned from that wonderful area, New Jersey. So, I just got back into town, but I wanted to make it here. Thank you for the honor of being able to serve again. I really appreciate it. I feel there's a lot more that the Human Services Commission can do and we look forward to working and trying to do as much as we can for the town. Thank you for your support. I appreciate it. Have a wonderful Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
And to you. Thank you. Yes, we did. And then, to hear, consider and act upon the following reappointment. Tree Warden, Ken Placco, for the term 1114 to 1231, 2014. Let me explain. Mr. Placco is retiring at the end of this month. So, we wanted to make sure that he was tree warden for every day left in the year, between now and then. So, that's why that's the shorter term. May I have a motion to accept?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussions?
Just quickly, Ken, thank you for your service for all these years, for protecting our town and saving our trees and our neighborhoods. And I just want to thank you very much for volunteering to be reappointed and finish this term out. Thank you.
I concur completely. You've done a tremendous job in terms of protecting one of the most important assets that we have in our town, which is our trees. And I am incredibly grateful for your service. We're going to miss you quite a bit as our tree warden, but hope you have all the best, you know, out maybe having fun with the trees. Walking in the woods, maybe.
Yeah, Ken and I have been through, I've learned a lot from Ken in the last few years. There are certain positions in this town that are literally no-win positions. Mr. Placco has one of them. If he chooses to cut a tree down, there are all sorts of folks that are up in arms over that happening. If he chooses not to cut a tree down, there are people up in arms over the fact that he's not cutting it down. There's absolutely no way to win his job. Ken has handled that marvelously in maintaining a great disposition. We've had some fascinating talks. I think that one of the things that Ken has guided us through is, it's 27 years in a row now, Ken, that we have been Tree City USA recipients of the award. He's also worked with our Forestry Commission to help build an inventory of trees on town land. And we've got a new initiative underway where we are using flyovers to, and our GIS system to document the canopy of tree coverage in our town. It will help us come up with an improved strategy and planning going forward to take care of these valuable assets in our town. So, any further discussion from the board? Any comments from the public? All right. Coming back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Placco.
Thank you.
Ken, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Sure. It's my last time.
We can schedule special Board of Selectment meetings.
This is the first time. I've never requested to be the tree warden, so I'm really surprised. Also, I've been, over the past year, I've been called a short timer. Well, now I can call myself a short-termer. But beyond that, I really support, or thank the board for their support over the years. Every one of you over the years. I mean, since I've been here for 23 years, it's been great and it really has helped me get through some of those rough times. And the public has been great. I cannot say enough about them and their support at times. So, thank you very much.
Ken, thank you. All right, moving on. Now, we're on to appointments. Item eight is for information only. The Southwest Regional Mental Health Board. I've appointed Patricia King, unaffiliated, 112 Harbor Road, for a term of 1113 through 1116. Ms. King is replacing Cheryl Blumenthal, who resigned. Moving on to item nine, appointments. To hear, consider and act upon the following temporary appointment. This is tree warden, Jeff Reminder, from 112, 2015, through 331, 2015. Let me point out that the reason for this short-term appointment is to give the Department of Public Works time to go out and find a permanent replacement for Mr. Placco. This basically buys us the time to advertise, interview candidates, select one, and have that person come on board on a timely basis. May I have a motion to accept?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Reminder is here, I believe. There he is. Any comments on the board?
Do you want to go ahead? No. I just want to say thank you for volunteering to step up and serve and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
I will add in, good luck, as the first selection pointed out.
I would point out that Mr. Minders is one of the more recent additions to our DPW staff. He comes to us with extensive background, working as a arborist and with all the appropriate licenses. We were very pleased to have him join us at the time. This was not necessarily contemplated when that happened, but it's great to see that kind of depth and talent and skill level as part of our Department of Public Works. And I want to compliment Joe Michelangelo and Scott Bartlett for recruiting people as skilled as Mr. Reminder in doing this. So, thank you. And Jeff, would you care to say any words?
I just would like to thank the board for the appointment. I know that there's going to be some big shoes to fill in Mr. Placco's retirement. I look forward to the challenges and working with everybody in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to other appointments. Did we vote on that?
No.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Other appointments to the Water Pollution Control Authority, this is also for information only. Kevin Kiley, Republican, 237 Steiner Road, is the Board of Selectment Representative. Mr. Kiley, thank you very much for taking over that responsibility.
You're welcome.
I'm going to say thank you as well.
You're welcome.
I look forward to it.
Next up, we have a report to the board. You know, as part of our ongoing approach to letting people in our town know about some of the wonderful options, we've had a phenomenal artistic group called the Connecticut Symphonic Winds. And we thought it would be great to have them come and provide us with a presentation. Did you want to, I did want to also present Mr. Pressler with the following. And this is actually addressed to Mr. DePaul, the music director. On behalf of the Town of Fairfield, in our 375th year, is with great pleasure that I welcome the Connecticut Symphonic Winds Ensemble as an integral part of our community. I hereby recognize this valued musical group with the honorary title of the Connecticut Wind Ensemble of Fairfield. The Town of Fairfield looks forward to using this honorary title in conjunction with the Ensemble's established identity, Connecticut Symphonic Winds, to underscore the mutually beneficial relationship. As first electman, it gives me much satisfaction to be able to have the Town of Fairfield recognize this accomplished music ensemble through its past and traditionally free performances. The Town acknowledges this talented and generous ensemble's contribution to the cultural enrichment of Fairfield and our surrounding communities. By establishing this relationship, we hope to encourage financial support for CSW through other organizations, businesses, and local supporters who can help promote appreciation for the arts to benefit the whole community's enjoyment. Having performed at least three times at the famed Carnegie Hall in New York and overseas to the enjoyment of many audiences, Fairfield acknowledges CSW's celebration of its 29th season. We also celebrate Fairfield's enrichment of now joining the group of Connecticut coastal townships that have their own representative concert organizations. We look forward to the opportunity to grow and develop our relationship that supports the Town of Fairfield, advances the recognition of the town as an arts enrichment venue, stimulates town businesses, and encourages the continued growth and recognition of the Connecticut Symphonic Winds. Congratulations. And I'm going to give you this letter, so you can take it with you.
Thank you very much.
Congrats again. And thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
It's an honor. I'd just like to say, I'm joined by the music director, Charles DePaul, who's sitting here. We invite you to keep an eye on newspaper and we'll get the word out. I believe our next up performance is March 7th. We'll perform at Roger Ledlow Middle School. This is a 70-member wind ensemble.
Yeah, Mr. Pressler? If you could speak, looking into the camera, because the mic, no, just look in, just stand there and look into the camera. You're good. You're good. The mic will pick you up as long as you're kind of talking this way. You can talk to the board.
I'll talk to the board?
Yep.
I hope I won't bore you. This is a remarkable group. This has grown over the years and we are so happy to have Roger Ledlow Middle School as the venue to actually hold 70 members on stage. This group plays all kinds of upbeat music. It is classical, it is film music, and traditional music that we've all grown up with. And due to some breakthroughs in funding, we've been able to get from PepsiCo funds to allow us to do one digital projection, performance in conjunction with a piece of music for each performance. So, I think we're one of the only ones in the area, if not the state, that does this. So, this is going to be an eye-opening experience as we move forward in the future and it's an honor to be part of the Town of Fairfield. Thank you so very much on behalf of the Connecticut Symphonic Winds.
Before you go.
Yes.
Date, time, and location of your next concert?
March 7th, at Roger Ledlow Middle School, here in Fairfield, on Uncoa Road.
Very good.
7:30 PM.
All right. Any comments from my colleagues?
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Oh, thank you very, very much.
If you come, it will resonate with you.
Fantastic.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again. Ms. Stannick, did you want to catch them?
I wasn't planning on speaking again, but if you could get that videotaped, I had the pleasure of watching this group a couple of different times and they're beyond, and when I say they're professional, I was not expecting the level of professionalism that I saw. They're wonderful artists. Most of these people have, you know, a day job and do music on the side, but they do music on the side because it's what they love. And the day job funds the music on the side. So, if you have the opportunity, bring your children, whatever, to come and see it. It's educational for them. It was, it's beautiful for anybody who's listening to it. And I'm not a music aficionado. I, you know, prefer visual arts, but I have to tell you, it's worth going to.
Thank you.
And if you could get it on public television, that would be great.
Thank you, Sharon.
And we should point out that those concerts are free. All right. Next up, to hear a report from the Forestry Committee on the Community Forest Management Sir, could you introduce yourself?
Come back. Can't get rid of me that easy, Mike. It's been my honor and privilege to work with a very dedicated energy group since 2006 with the members of the Fairfield Forestry Committee, Jeff Stedman, Mary Hoag, Misty Byer, who's not here tonight, Sarah Levy, Alyssa Israel, Joe File, and Joe McGee? Well, no, Joe is on the task force. But it's been my honor and privilege, like I said. Last year, we came before the board with a forest management plan. And I know by now you all read it and have digested it and are ready to vote, but no. What we are here today to promote this again and push it along, to see where we can get What we are here today to promote this again and push it along, to see where we can get possibly your endorsement of this in some form, way, or whatever the board can do for us, and giving us the guidelines to the town for the future of what we want to do for the Fairfield Community Forest. With that, I brought Mr. Stedman and Mary Hoag to kind of give you some background and some changes that were made since last year, since the laws are changing quickly.
Wow, yes, please.
If I can ask them to come up.
Thank you. Ken was a little bit too complimentary of me. I'm not a member of the committee. I've had the privilege to work for the committee. My name is Jeff Stedman.
Thank you, Mr. Stedman.
And what we put together, I think it's, the best way to describe it, it's not required in the state statutes or the town code. There's no procedure for municipal adoption by the RTM. We prepared as a guidance document, as an effort to promote environmental stewardship, an initiative that the committee took upon itself, and actually, it came from, the idea came from Ken. We applied for a grant from the U.S. Forest Service through their America the Beautiful Program, which gave us a little bit of money to work on the document. And what we hoped the document would do would, several things. It would describe the benefits and the importance of the town's community forest, and that's the public trees. I think there's 270 miles of town roads, and Ken estimated between 50,000 and 75,000 trees on the right-of-ways along the roads, or overhanging the right-of-ways from private properties, and maybe another 100,000 trees on other town properties, such as the open space areas, town parks, the schools, the town greens. And that's what we're defining as the community forest, the public trees. So, we tried to use this report to talk about the benefits, the environmental benefits, the economic benefits to property owners in terms of enhancing property values, also the quality of life benefits and the importance of town trees to the history and culture of the town, going back to when Mr. Bronson planted the dogwoods along the road. So, we tried to use the report to talk about those benefits and then identify what we call the institutional framework for managing the public trees, which includes the RTM as the legislative body, and your board as setting policy and direction and leadership and appointing the tree warden, the functions of the tree warden, and then all the other town agencies that have something to do with public trees. The Conservation Commission manages the open space areas, Parks and Rec has their responsibilities, the Police Department is involved when there's an emergency to deal with the trees, all of the different town agencies. And there is also private groups that are interested, such as UI, where they have obviously a big interest in this, and down to the citizens of the town that are concerned about trees and have an important interest. So, we tried to identify that, and then the issues that are of interest, that need to be addressed by the town. And the priority issue, of course, is public safety, maintaining the trees in the right-of-way to protect property and lives, but also the environmental issues and the issues of coordination. So, we tried to organize the report so that we described those elements. And then what we tried to do is set forth what we call the vision for managing the community forest. Again, not as any something that's a regulation or has to be done, but something that if it's accepted as endorsed as a policy of the town, to have the other town agencies and people involved try to advance that vision through their normal activities. And we also identified a number of projects that could be pursued to help achieve the vision, and identified the agencies and what they can do to pursue it. That's what we tried to do, and we intentionally presented this, as we had to, as a non-binding guidance document that we hope that you would endorse as a guidance document. And in the future, one of the ideas we had, or one of our projects, is to take elements of this plan out and present it as part of the Plan of Conservation and Development, or present it to the planning and zoning for adoption as part of the Plan of Conservation and Development. So, that's an overview of what we've put into the plan, and I think Mary could talk more specifically about some of the accomplishments and initiatives of the committee.
Hello, I'm Mary Hoag. I'm vice chair on the Forestry Committee. Misty is out of town, so I get to speak for the committee. And thanks to Ken for his, he has such a cooperative way of working, so even though he's our tree warden and we're there to support him, we're all working as a team, and it's just been wonderful working with him. So, we've done things like working with DEEP to do a survey of our trees, which is how we know what our tree diversity, age, the health of the trees are. We have the tree canopy that you mentioned, from the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council. We do an annual workshop with the Connecticut Audubon called Trees to Branches. We do that every spring, also with DEEP. We did seasonal walks last year at the Connecticut Audubon with Miley and an arborist, Don Perry, Perro? Parrot? And we always debate on how to say his name. We're working on a winter workshop for the trade to talk about how to properly plant trees, because as hopefully people have noticed on Unqua, Millplain, Burr, and Congress, there's lots of eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheets of white paper saying posted, because there's a very intense statewide trimming program going on. And in Fairfield, thanks to working with Mike, we have a pilot for about two miles?
I thought it was about four.
Four miles? And those are the areas that were chosen based on UI telling us the most critical areas that have the most problematic, problem lines, as well as affecting things like the Ledlow High School, which is a disaster area, Burr School, Carrollton. So, hopefully, people are seeing, you know, that we'll be able to take a look and see what this will mean for our town. And I thought that was a very thoughtful way of going about this very important and big change for Fairfield, as you said, trees are a very important part of our culture. We created a Fairfield Vegetative Management Task Force, and Joe McGee was on that. He wrote the state two-story panel report along with, he co-wrote it. I was on the State Vegetative Management Task Force, so Fairfield was one of few towns that had a representative on that, and that's also thanks to Ken. And we forgot to mention Maureen Graney, because she doesn't get to our meetings, but she is our tech person. So, we have our webpage on the town website, and she maintains our Facebook page. And so, we are, we do workshops and try and reach out to the public, and we're always looking for interested people who want to come join us. So, this is a really important plan. I've worked with a lot of people in the state about trees being on the task force, and this is unusual. This is really special that Fairfield has this to this level. And it really gives us an ability to work operationally and always know that we're working towards an end goal that we all know about. So, I hope you will endorse this, and we can keep going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just two quick points, since you kind of gave me an opening there. One, one of the questions I get as first electman is, you know, what are the first things that surprised you when you took over the job? The first thing that surprised me is we have a forestry committee. And I literally called Misty Bayer up and said, or Misty Bayer, and said, "You've got to come in and fill me in on what you do and how you do it and how it works." And I've had, been very impressed with the dedication and the thoroughness, and certainly looking at this report, which is an extremely professional job, so I want to thank you for providing that resource to the town. The second piece, I want to emphasize on the remarks you just made. UI has a, what they call a vegetation management program, which is a long way of saying cutting trees on the town right-of-ways. I want to ask again what those four roads are, or three roads, what are the roads?
Millplain, Unqua, Burr, and parts of Burr and parts of Congress, where they intersect.
And you were good enough to point out that certain trees have a...
An eight-and-a-half-by-eleven white sheet of paper says posted. That's about all you can read when you're driving by, and those trees are coming down. They're not getting just trimmed, they're getting removed.
Well, what that means is UI is requesting that those trees are coming down. Do they have permission you have to do that?
That's why they're posted.
Yeah, we are working on that now. Their time period is not over with. We're waiting for public comment to come in.
So, if I'm a resident and I'm driving by, those trees are coming down. So, that's what that tells me, those trees will not be there in the future.
No.
We basically laid out, these four roads are about four miles, as Ken pointed out, to do a pilot, so people would understand what this program means and what the impact is on Fairfield. We've had a number of public meetings, and there are some mixed views on what it meant to understand it, so we thought the safest thing to do is have a relatively small pilot that would allow our citizens to see firsthand what this is. These are not the only four miles of road. Based on how this goes, UI would like to expand this to, I'm going to say, 270 miles of road in Fairfield.
Yes. Yeah, it's an eight-year plan, and I think Fairfield's doing a very good job. The other towns are, thanks to our reporter, one of our reporters here, and one of our missing members, we did an actual inventory, which is different than a survey and inventory. We took every single tree. We measured it, we assessed its health, we assessed, you know, what type of tree it was. Sean took pictures, so we have pictures of every single tree, so we now have an actual before anything has happened, which has not been done throughout the state before this tree trimming. So, we can actually be able to see the before and after of what this pilot will give us, and people can understand how that will affect their town. And in the right-of-way, I want to make clear, is that they're town trees, so anybody in town owns that tree. As a taxpayer, you own that tree, so anybody in town has the ability to say that there's a concern, they have a concern about any of those trees.
And how would they voice that concern?
In writing to the town tree warden. Oh, sorry. In writing to the town tree warden.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Stedman, go right ahead.
Just one quick comment now on Ken's retirement. When I started working for the town, I was 87 or 88, and Ken was the open space...
Wow, you have aged markedly.
Started.
Ken was the open space manager in the Conservation Department then, and he was a wonderful guy to work with at that time. And I agree with what you said before, Mr. Tetro, that Ken's outstanding quality, I think, in this job is his ability to work with people and deal with difficult situations and not get into the confrontation or, and be able to solve problems. And also to have the initiative to do projects such as this, and also the management plan for the Burr Homestead that was done some time ago, that was also done as a result of a grant that Ken got from the America the Beautiful Program. So, it's really a credit, in my opinion, to the Town of Fairfield to have an employee such as this over so many years.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen, did you have something to add?
I just actually have a clarifying question. So, the trees have been posted by you, Mr. Paco. In other words, those trees now you have gone out and looked, and you're, you've kind of essentially given permission to UI. And at this point, then, if a resident, any resident, as Mary has pointed out to us, wants to come forward and object, they would then do so in writing to you?
I think, a little misconception there, but when I post a tree, it's not giving permission, it's acknowledging that a request has come in to have that tree removed, at which point, after a 10-day time period, if no one's contested that removal, and I go back and look at the tree and feel that it should come down, I'll give permission to do so.
Okay. So, the posting is not permission, per se?
Right.
But in other words, what I'm trying to get at is you are an ongoing part of the process and the conversation with UI. So, if there are trees that you believe, you know, belong or should remain, that you can be a part of that conversation as well?
Yeah, this is what took so long for PUR to kind of get the word out to the utility companies. They wanted to try to get it right, because they had so much protest going on with how they were administering it in the past. Since then, the utility companies have really have to be sharp and come out with reasons why a healthy tree should come down. And without justifying that reasoning, there's no reason to take it down. So, work around it, guys, like you did in the past.
So, bottom line, in this pilot, in the case of this pilot, every tree that has a sign on it today, if someone is not protesting, if no resident comes to you and says, "Mr. Paco, I want to make sure that this tree stays," is it fair to assume that those trees are all coming down?
I've had several protests in writing to me about the tree removal program, and in certain areas, some are individual trees, some are blanket areas, you know, why they're taking down so many trees. They probably just didn't attend the meetings beforehand, but on the other hand, we'll be meeting with UI and having a hearing out there to discuss it further.
Is that, you want me to clarify that?
Can I? May I follow up on that, if you don't mind?
Sure.
So, just to be clear, so in the process you described, the Kristen just asked about, the trees that are posted, if you, if you don't hear from any citizen that says, "I don't want this tree taken down," for whatever reason, it does come back to you for a final verdict, if you will?
Yes.
To determine whether it comes down, or it gets trimmed, or something in between?
That's correct.
And at this point in time, you have not made that personal decision on any of those trees?
No, I, it started already, I, the way I posted it was I started on the south end of town, Unqua, Millplain road sides. Those dates, since I posted them, those dates have passed, and I have heard from some people with regards to some grumblings, let me put it that way?
Okay.
That they feel it's too many trees. They never put it in writing. But when I got to the Burr and Congress Street area, I did receive a handful of requests to say that, you know, "This tree shouldn't come down in front of my house, or on this corner, or down this north section of Burr."
Okay.
But to be clear, that's an advisory to the tree warden, that because somebody protests, does not require the tree warden to listen to that protest, or there may be other extenuating circumstances where the tree is not healthy or needs to come down from that.
Correct. That makes perfect sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, this is kind of the warning to say, in this time period, if you have something, please speak now, because without your input, the decision will be made without your input.
That's correct.
Good. Thank you for that.
Any further comments or questions from the board?
I just want to thank the committee, you know, Alyssa, and Jeff, and Mary, and Misty, and everyone who isn't here, for all their hard work for protecting our trees and for protecting our town, and for putting together this report, which is phenomenal. I mean, the information, the recommendations, and the hard work are very evident, and as Mr. Tetro mentioned, the professionalism of the report itself, lay things out clearly and concisely and in the best interests of our town and our trees, and I thank you very much for that.
Is this report available online?
Yes.
I believe...
Whereabouts?
I gave it to Kathleen, but I'm going to ask to be sure it's on the forestry task...
Great.
It is in the backup, electronics backup for this meeting as well.
It is.
Which is everything in this meeting, but we're going to ask specifically, just this book be on our webpage, which is the forestry page on the town website.
Very good.
Great.
All right. Any final, oh, Kristen, go right ahead.
I would echo selectman Kylie's comments. Having worked specifically with Alyssa and Sarah on another plan that was put together, I have great respect for the amount of time and thought that has gone into this. This is an amazing document, and, you know, it's just, it's wonderful to be leaders in the state and to be able to take that forward. My question actually is a process one. Our agenda had to hear a report from, and I, though I really, I would love, actually, to be the person to vote to endorse this plan, I'm wondering if, just from an agenda standpoint, perhaps that should be, I don't know.
I think there are two things. The initial concept was have the plan presented and give this board time to consider it. If this board would like to endorse the plan at this time, I would entertain a motion that would take a two-thirds majority to add that endorsement vote to the agenda.
I'm happy to second that, if you're making a motion.
Okay, so I will move to, I guess, amend the item. Is that procedurally?
No, not to amend the item, just to, I think, just to add...
To put it on the agenda?
Add endorsement.
To add the endorsement, okay. So, I make a motion that we add the endorsement of this plan onto this agenda.
Okay, and that motion reads something like, "The Board of Selectment hereby endorses the plan of the Community Forest Management Plan as presented in December of 2014?"
Sounds great.
Okay, is that what you were seconding?
Yes, second.
Okay. Any further discussion on adding the item to the agenda? Any discussion from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that item is now on the agenda and before us. Any further discussion on the endorsement? Any comments from the public on this board endorsing the forest management plan? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, you've got your endorsement.
Thank you.
It's really because Kristen wanted to make a motion on our last meeting.
We never do this either.
Thank you.
That might have been a curse.
All right, next up, item 13, the Affordable Housing Commission Committee. This was postponed from our earlier meeting in December, to hear a report from the Affordable Housing Committee on the Affordable Housing Plan. Mr. Barnhart.
Good afternoon, Board. For the record, Mark Barnhart, Director of Community Economic Development for the town. First, I'd like to thank the board for accommodating my schedule and postponing this item from your previous meeting. I had a conflict, so I do appreciate that consideration. I'm joined tonight by Steve Grothwall, who's the chairman of the Affordable Housing Committee. So, I'll start, just give you a little background. So... So, we're pivoting a little bit from a plan that you just recently endorsed regarding our community trees or forest, community forest, to a plan now that looks at the housing needs of our residents. And we began this process almost two years ago, when this board tasked the Affordable Housing Committee with updating the town's Affordable Housing Plan, which was written in 1988. What we didn't know then was that this issue would become very prominent. The town would, not necessarily through actions of our own, which we'd like to think, but we, the town, did see several highly controversial set-aside development applications made under Connecticut General Statute eight dash thirty G, which certainly thrust this issue into public awareness, greater prominence with the public. And I guess it was fortuitous in some sense, because it did certainly increase the profile and participation of the public in developing this plan. We certainly did have highly engaged public at several workshops and spirited discussion on the plan formation. So, since the time in which this board tasked the committee with updating the plan, the committee has been hard at work. We sought and secured grant funding from the State Department of Housing under its Housing for Economic Growth Program, otherwise known as Home Connecticut, to defray costs associated with the planning effort. Fortunately, when taking that money, it took a lot longer to actually get us off the ground, because we didn't actually get the, we had noticed the grant award fairly early on, but we weren't able to actually close on the grant until late fall of 2013. And with those funds, we did retain a consultant, Glenn Chalder of Plan and Metrics, who's not with us tonight, but we do wish to thank him for his efforts. He spent a lot of time with me and with the committee in assisting us in this work. During that period of time, we also conducted numerous interviews, meetings, public workshops, and presentations to various groups. Those groups included the Board of Operation Hope, the Fairfield Housing Authority, Human Services Commission. We met with the Fairfield Clergy Association. I met with several neighborhood associations, groups, including Stratfield Village Association and the Southport Conservancy. We also had a joint meeting with the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, among others. Part of this effort involved looking back at what we've done previously. We reviewed, obviously, the 1988 report, reviewed key demographic trends and their implications for Fairfield into the future. We looked at other communities and what they have done to address this issue and examined best practices. And we were mindful of the board's charge that we try to develop an action plan, an implementation plan. And so, we think that this, this plan that's before you today does capture that charge. At this point, I'd like to recognize Steve and turn things over to Steve to make a few comments, and then I think I'll jump back up and certainly get into the heart of it and respond to questions that you probably will have. To Steve.
Thank you, Mark. Steve Grothwall, 132 Hadley Road, Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee. And I'm just going to digress for a second and say that, you know, we were supposed to be here two weeks ago, and we got postponed. And tonight's meeting is really good. I really feel great. It's uplifting to see some more of the employees and the community, people who come forward and devote their time and efforts. And it's just, it's really great. So, thank you. Thank you for the postponement.
Would you like us to do it again?
No, no. So, the update to the Affordable Housing Plan has fifty pages. The appendix has another eighty, so that's a hundred and thirty. And it's a very good plan, very well thought out. And as Mark had outlined, we were helped by many different groups in town, many different segments of the community that came out to voice their opinion. And as you guys know, if you get opinions on one side, it's good to get them on the other side, because the two of them come together and you get a better product. For finding time to read a hundred and thirty pages is going to be difficult for some people. But for me, the essence of the entire report, you can find right on the cover. It says, "Diversifying Fairfield's Housing Portfolio," and then, "Taking Control of Our Future." And to me, those are the two key concepts. We have a current and growing need for more affordable housing units and for additional housing options for our residents. We need to diversify the portfolio, and we need to give the residents more options. And we need to be proactive. We need to work on the solutions ourselves. If we're not proactive, as we've learned, others are going to come in, propose things that are not in the best interest of the town, and it's going to be difficult for us to oppose some of them. As Mark had alluded, the update to the plan has an action plan that has eleven steps or eleven goals. And the Affordable Housing Committee will be working to act on them next month, in January. And we look forward to working with the Board of Selectmen, the RTM, the Plan and Zoning Commission, and the other key stakeholders as we work to implement those action steps. And with that, I just want to thank a few individuals who have been really helpful to us as we've gone through this. First, Mark Barnhart. The Affordable Housing Committee could really not do much of anything without Mark's help and support, and he was instrumental, he was key, in getting this update done. So, thank you, Mark. Glenn Chalder, of course, our consultant, was invaluable. I also want to thank Nan Jackson, who for many years was the chair of our predecessor entity, the Affordable Housing Task Force. Twenty-five years ago, Nan and her committee produced the first Affordable Housing Plan. And we owe much to Nan and the committee members for their hard work and dedication. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for your initial charge, for your support as we work through the update, and I'm sure for your support in the future as we implement. And then lastly, I want to thank the Affordable Housing Committee itself. And bear with me a second, I want to make sure I get everybody included. Richard Gribko, who was born and raised and schooled in Fairfield, been here, knows the town like the back of his hand, and knows probably most everybody in the town. Cindy Samarko, Nancy Lyons, Jerry Stillman, and Joe Horasniak, and myself, of course. So, with that, thank you. I'll turn it back to Mark.
I know you've had the plan, and hopefully you've had an opportunity to review it. It has been posted for some time now on our website. We had several public hearings, or public meetings with regard to it. We had a workshop earlier in the year, in which we started to get some feedback in terms of what should be in the plan and various strategies and approaches to addressing this issue. And then we had a workshop in the fall where we were asking for specific feedback on the draft plan that was then before the town. And from that, then, the committee took those, took feedback and comments that we received through that process, and last month adopted a plan and authorized its submission to you. So, as Steve noted, actually, I think the heart of the plan is really the action plan, which starts on page forty-five. And I think, you know, there were some comments at the workshop back in September that perhaps we didn't, it was a little bit too modest or too timid, we didn't go far enough, but there were countervailing opinions that we were actually being quite aggressive and perhaps went too far. I think this really strikes a balance. It's achievable, but at the same time, it does force us to reach a little bit and work, as Steve indicated, proactively to try to address this issue as a community. But the real work really begins from now on, because this is really the twenty thousand foot level, sets forth a plan, goals to be achieved. But we actually have to now work hard to flush them out, put the meat on the bone, so to speak, and implement those. So, I will, at this point, hopefully, respond to any questions or comments that you might have.
If I might. Two questions up front. One, as part of one of the fair housing complaints filed against the town, we were supposed to update this plan.
Yes.
Did we have a chance to review this with HUD or any of the officials we talked to up there? And are they comfortable that this meets their stipulation to us?
We did indeed. Back in, we, back in September, I sent a copy of the draft plan to HUD, to the HUD representative, providing an opportunity for them to provide feedback. I didn't hear anything from them for several months, until very recently. When I sent them a final copy of the plan, they indicated that they had some minor comments, but they deemed them not that significant that, because I had already indicated, well, we had asked for your comments. Months ago, we had already gone out to public comment with the public, and we had actually authorized or approved the plan. So, the comment I had back from HUD was they were not that significant in terms of the comments that they had, but we have reached out to them, yes.
And then second, having sat in on one or two of the earlier presentations of this at part of your public sessions, did you get any feedback from the public, was then, any changes to this plan, the draft, based on what you heard back from the public?
Yes, there were certainly some changes made to the plan to incorporate comment feedback. I can't recall specifics of it, but I know we spent a lot of time with the committee going over comments. Steve Grothwall and the committee should be commended. They are extremely transparent in this process, open. They allow, all the meetings, obviously, are open to the public. But Steve takes it a step further and actually invites people to participate meaningfully at the table during all of our Affordable Housing Committee meetings. And we've had a number of folks that have come to probably every single Affordable Housing Committee meeting and provided comment on elements of the plan, and even wordsmithing the document, if I might. So, there have been numerous changes made to the plan in light of comments that we've received over this time, both from the committee as well as from the public. I don't--
I want to add just two things. One is, a lot of people have come and have come regularly who are not part of the committee. One, I'll just mention Jan Reiver, has been, I think, to almost every one of our meetings for two years. And he really has given us a lot of valuable, good comments. And one of the things that came out of the public hearing that did change was, they suggested we bump up our goal for ten years of producing units, so that we went from under a hundred to a hundred. So, yeah.
Good. Thank you. And then, one other point on page forty-seven, action item three. On the housing fund, I think there are a number of comments in terms of how to create that money and how that can be used, which are good. The second dot, or bullet point, re-appropriating the unused budget allocation each year that was reserved for senior tax relief. Did anybody review this with the finance department?
No, we did not. And I, that's very inartfully stated, I think. There was a sentiment actually expressed by members of the public, as well as some committee members, that there might be a possibility of allocating funds left over at the end of the year for this purpose. It's not necessarily, it was an idea suggested, we threw it out there. There was, again, also the same, very similar comment made, in terms of making appropriation from the general fund or bonding for this at a public workshop, which is incorporated here. I think we're looking more at, most of the support was around establishing a fee structure.
Yeah.
But to answer your question, no.
Okay, thank you. Because technically, that's not possible.
Yeah.
All right. What that would mean, it'd be basically spending money that wasn't authorized as part of the normal budget process.
You know, if it was an appropriation, it could be done, but I agree, it's not the way it should be written there.
Yeah, you, the way that's written, you'd basically be spending money that was not authorized as part of the original budget process. That is not allowed. All right. There are other ways to do that, but as it's, spending the balance of what's left at the end of the year is, you cannot spend more money than--
It would require, you know, it would require a new appropriation of some sort.
In another budget.
Right.
It cannot be spent as part of that. You can't spend leftover money. All right, so it--
That was not designated for that purpose.
Then it would have been improved in the budget.
Right.
So, you can't have it both ways. Either you put it in the budget, which might be appropriate, or bond for it, or have that appropriated--
That certainly can be removed as an item.
If that's possible, it might make the most sense, because it--
It creates confusion, otherwise.
Yes. But in terms of creating the fee, creating a fund to do that, and there's a couple of different points where that's referenced in here, I think that's a very intriguing process, and I think that's something we should explore fully. I know that's been used in other towns. We've had a chance to talk to--
Yes.
Specifically, representatives from New Canaan.
Yes.
Where they've used that, and I think that buys us some flexibility on doing this. So, sorry to step down on those two points, but any questions from my colleagues?
Just, I was on that, I was on that same section as well. And, you know, I'm just not clear, is, on the last bullet point, what other, what other types of sources might there be out there? What have other towns done across the country differently, creatively? You know, there's fees, and there's the things that are listed here, but are there any other ways to find funding or places? Can you just expand on that?
Yeah, it could be private donations.
Okay.
Both, it could be donations, monetary donations. There certainly could be an opportunity at some point, although not technically into a fund, there could be donations of land as well for that purpose.
That's--
So, I think we'd like to make sure that we incorporate that somehow in terms of our thinking, because that's certainly one way in which we might be able to, I mean, the idea is really to have a fund, a dedicated fund for that purpose, so that we could quickly respond to opportunities that might present themselves. And right now, we simply don't have the opportunity to do so.
Right.
And we're easily outmaneuvered and outgunned by private developers that will snatch up any appropriately parcel of land that could be developed for any type of--
As well as outf financed as well.
Out financed as well.
Which is, which may be the most important piece.
So, it's very similar to the thinking, I think, one of the, aside from looking at examples like New Canaan and other towns that have done so, but looking at how we've tried to address our open space needs the same way.
Right.
Which is to try to create a fund whereby we have money set aside for open space acquisitions, and then requiring folks to make some provision for that.
Right. And that's kind of what I, that's kind of where I was going with that, because when I was on the Board of Finance, I think it was maybe ninety-seven or ninety-nine, when we did that initial, not funding, but allocation of the thirteen and a half million dollars for open space that we then use over the years for acquisitions. It sounded like maybe there could be some similarities in how that might mechanically work, should we go down that road. So, I think we were kind of thinking along the same lines.
Yes, yes, very much.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay, Kristen?
Just actually some background questions, because I'd like to spend some time, if we can, kind of talking about the action plan, which is kind of the heart of where this is headed. But on page twenty-eight of the report, the lessons learned, and it's, the heading references lessons learned from this meeting. And really, this was the community in that, with that community workshop, which, you know, I was there that evening. And partly, this is prompt, my experience that night is prompting this question. Is this feedback here on this page just from that particular community workshop, or does it include other subsequent community gatherings as well? Because I recall that night, there was a lot of conversation, people, at that point in time, I think, there were still some people kind of becoming more familiar with some of the terms and getting educated, almost. I think as a community, we tend to be, right now, more educated--
Yes.
--because of the prominence of the issue. So, I'm just curious if--
It's primarily, I would say primarily, from lessons drawn from that workshop. And it's not meant to be exhaustive, or it was an attempt to, for the committee, to digest what they heard. But, you know, and again, even at both workshops, we're really talking about a fairly small subset of the total population that was engaged in this particular issue, despite efforts to provide outreach. You know, we only had sixty, seventy people, maybe, in a room at one time or another, perhaps a little bit more. But, you know, it's a smaller, when you're talking about a town of sixty thousand in population, it's a, I don't want to get too carried away in terms of drawing any conclusions from a fairly small group. But I think, in some ways, it did shape some of our thinking in terms of where we went, based on that feedback.
And your comments for five, I guess, part of my thinking is exactly that. There was actually a great turnout at that meeting.
It was a great turnout, yes.
But certainly, there were many of us who were there, yourself, you know, and other town leaders who are very involved and interested in the issue. And, yes, I think the feedback certainly has impacted what you've done, and that's as it should be. But, yes, kind of recognizing the broader perspective out there, so--
Right.
of recognizing the broader perspective out there, so I appreciate that comment.
And so we wanted to provide other opportunities where we participate, including, you know, if they wanted to submit. We did receive some written comments as well.
You know, the last plan was done 25 days ago, and then this update was done. We're hoping, though, that the plan is like a living document, and that we get to make it better every month, and that the community gets the input, and working with the Board of Selectment and RTA, it becomes a better and better document. The goals get refined and implemented in better fashion. So I thought we did a really good job, but if I, you know, it's not done. You know, we've got to now implement and create a better document as we go along.
That makes me happy to hear that, because that's the reality of our situation. I had another question, and just trying to find, I have some notes, and I didn't put the page reference on here, but the median sales price, and maybe you guys know where that is, perhaps on the case study, but I had 562,000 as our median sales price.
Yeah, I think last year, based on information that Steve pulled off MLS, it was 575. So it depends on what source you're using, but that's sound about, it's in that mid-500 range.
Okay. And those are homes, MLS homes sold?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I guess part of my question about that is just in the current market environment, you know, the difficulty of obtaining credit. Does that have any impact on that number?
Well, we did see, we did see a slight correction in terms of housing prices. They came down a little bit, but they're back up. And certainly, credit has tightened considerably, which would make it, even though interest rates are at, or, you know, they're ticking up a little bit, but they've been at historic lows, with the tightened credit environment, the underwriting criteria, it makes it difficult for those folks at the lower end of the income spectrum to afford a home, which is part of what we're attempting to address through this plan. The other point is, not everyone, obviously, depending on their circumstances, I think one of the things we found instructive going through that exercise during the initial workshop, was that people go through a variety of different, their housing needs change over time. So we don't all grow up or live in, very few of us, I should say, grow up and live in that same house that, for the entirety of our life experience. That's very, very rare. And so some of us, we go through a progression. And as our housing needs change, we need to have those housing options available in our community, if we're going to keep or retain some of those folks, or at least allow them the choice to stay in Fairfield.
So that's actually one of my other questions, which is, and I'm wondering how much this plan, and how much you see this plan addressing the issue I'm about to raise, which is, there are a lot of people who, like myself, have remodeled their homes and potentially expanded them. So where we have had, and, you know, I won't even pick on the beach area, because we have the FEMA issues and the elevation and all that. But in other neighborhoods, certainly, we have many homes, small capes, that are more modest in size, that have downstairs bedrooms and bathrooms, providing accessibility for folks who might be mobility impaired or elderly. And then, those houses are being torn down and replaced with much larger colonials. And does this take that into account in any way, or address that? Because I want to go back to what you just said, and actually Steve referenced it, the, right here, diversify our portfolio. And in a sense, that issue has an impact, tremendous impact, on our diversity and affordability. Because clearly, a remodeled home that's much larger is not going to be affordable in the same way as a more modest cape.
Well, part of our approach needs to be preserving what we already have. And we do have pockets of more modestly priced housing, and that's very difficult for us to hold on to in the face of market forces, unless we have some control over it. And the only way we can really do that is to actually have a deed restriction in place that would allow it to remain as a more modestly priced housing unit. So it does in a way, but, you know, clearly, there's a lot of work that has to be done, and that is of concern, because, you know, that's something that, I know some of the committee members, Steve mentioned, Dick Gribko, lived in town for many, many years, all their lives, and they've seen this progression. It's not necessarily, it's good for the grand list, but may not be necessarily healthy in other respects. And as you mentioned, the beach area certainly has seen that in the wake of Storm Sandy as well.
On a personal anecdote, a couple of years ago, I moved into town 25 days ago, and five-bedroom Greenfield Hill became an empty nester a couple of years ago, and looked around for another smaller place. I didn't need five bedrooms. And I couldn't find a place that was really affordable. And finally, I found one, I'm on Adley Road, Lake Mohegan area. It's a nice two-bedroom ranch. But in my neighborhood, and there are lots of them like that, in the two years I've been there, five of them have been purchased for 100, 300,000, three and a quarter, 280,000, torn down, and are now on the market, or have just been sold for $900,000.
Sure.
And so we lost what I would consider a starter home, or a good home to bring people back to the community. You know, my kids could afford that, maybe. And if we had the fund or something like that, maybe we could beat the developers in the door, you know, and get it locked up, and then it would like, at the Navy housing site, in perpetuity, we'd have these, so.
May I follow up on that, please?
Okay, I can go right ahead.
I mean, the white elephant in the room is zoning, right? So can you speak a little bit about how you folks plan to or are thinking about working with zoning to possibly address some of these, you know, inequities, or building that's going on? Or how can, how can we work together as a town, to be fair to everyone, to allow proper building, and to allow zoning to be fair, but not allow what Kristin just described to happen everywhere? And then, I think this disparity becomes even larger, right? It doesn't help this issue. So can you just generally speak about your approach with, in conjunction with zoning, and how it might have some positive impact on us going forward?
Well, we were very happy to have members of the Planning and Zoning Commission at the initial workshop. We followed it up with a joint meeting with members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. They were well represented at that meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee. We talked about specific strategies. We provided them with a preview, a draft of the report, invited comments. And the feedback that we've generally gotten through staff, and from our conversations informally with members of the commission, was that we're, there was nothing in the report that they felt uncomfortable with.
Okay.
So to follow up on that, I am in the process of scheduling a meeting through staff with at least the chairman, to talk about next steps, as we look specifically at the action items for 2015 that involve the Planning and Zoning Commission. But we're heartened by, you know, some of the steps that the commission has already undertaken. I mean, we do have a body of regulations in our town zoning regulations that deal with affordable housing, not perhaps as strong as we would like. They've certainly taken action more recently to provide for what I would term an incentive housing zone, an overlay district around the new commuter rail station. We think that that could be strengthened and expanded, and we'd like to talk to them further about that. The thing that we would like, the thing about the incentive housing zone is that it provides, from the developer's perspective, it provides an alternative to making an application under 8-30G.
It does.
Because it's beneficial to the developer, because it has less stringent requirements in terms of the percentage of units that need to be deed restricted as affordable. And those can be deed restricted for a higher income level than what is otherwise required. The benefit to the community is that we maintain control over the process. We can designate the areas where we think it's most appropriate to provide for this type of housing, and we can set more stringent design requirements, so that we know exactly what we're going to get, in terms of what it's going to look like, the number of units that are involved, and everything else that has to do with the housing that's being provided. So it's truly a win-win situation, potentially. It is really, from the state's perspective, it's the carrot to the 8-30G stick. I'd like to see a better relationship between the two, in terms of communities that adopt those incentive housing zones. I'd like to see some relief from the regulatory requirements of 8-30G, but that might be something that Kristin could take up at the state level at some point.
With a lot of help.
With a lot of help.
Okay. No, thank you for those comments. I appreciate that. Kristin, go ahead.
And just to follow up, as I mentioned, you know, certainly renovations, expansions, and there are many positives. And I don't want to downplay that, and I don't want to in any way say that we can fight the market on that. I mean, those are, as you said, market forces, and that's what the market will bear. And so yes, I think, you know, as you pointed out, there are zoning pieces to that. And then there is also just, you know, as we're acknowledging the market forces. I also have another question around the action items. Are these in priority order for you?
I don't think they are, no. No, they're not. We did try to look at, in terms of the action plan, we tried to look at those that we, we tried to slot them into a timetable that made sense to us, in terms of what we thought could be potentially achievable. Again, it is an ambitious plan in some respects, so we do have our work cut out for us. But I think that many of them are complementary. So you'll see, in terms of the action plan itself, you'll see talking about establishing a housing fund, but then, you know, the action step below it is to establish a fee that would actually provide a revenue source for the fund. So a lot of these items are complementary.
So let me just add to that, that the, I'll do the 11 items. So four of them, we hope to accomplish next year. Two of them in 2016, one in 2017, and then the other four after that. One of them being the 10-year goal of 100.
Which ones are for the first four?
Sorry, the housing fund, number three, inclusionary zoning fee, four, the model affordability plan, number five, and...
Updating our accessory apartment regulations, number six.
Number six?
Yeah, okay.
All right. So they're kind of chronologically in order, almost?
Almost.
Almost, yeah.
The first one, obviously, was an overarching goal. We do some of the other steps that will help us meet that goal of creating at least 100 new units. And obviously, by doing that, that will put us in a good position to obtain a moratorium, which was clearly one of the messages we heard from the public, is we need relief from 8-30G applications.
Right.
And the way that we can do that legally, under the current law, is to gather enough housing unit equivalency points that would qualify for at least a temporary moratorium that would provide some relief. So that's not achievable in the next year, but we think that with certain actions in place, that we could do that in the next three years, based on where we are. I'd love to see it sooner, but the reality is, we've got, we've got a work cut out for us.
And just to kind of note, in three years' time, we could have quite a few 8-30G applications come through that would...
But if we don't start now, we won't be in any position to do it three years from now. We'll still be fighting these arguments. So the sooner we start and try to, you know, at one point, I think I made this point earlier, I think the town of Fairfield was really ahead of its time when it adopted the 1988 plan. We were very much in a leadership role throughout the state in terms of setting aside affordable housing. In some respects, it actually penalized us under the existing law, because some of those housing developments were predate 1990 law, and so we don't get any credit for those units that were created. That is one of the vagaries of the law, which I'd like to see changed. But
Yeah.
That is the existing law. So things like Sullivan McKinney was created, Elder Housing, Parish Court, all those units were done prior to 1990. And so we don't get credit for them.
Which, again, is one of the absurdities of some of this, and this, from the same point that without the stick, we actually took the carrot and ran with it, because it was the right thing to do. We took steps before the state required we do them, and now we're penalized, because they don't count those initiatives.
Right.
They ought to count twice. I mean, it, we were, in the same way, that when you look at the point system you mentioned earlier, senior housing isn't counted the same as other housing.
Counts a half.
There's, yeah, there's a penalty. So to sit here and suggest if we build senior housing, seniors are only worth half as much as other people, is an absurd value statement on behalf of the state, and the state should change those things right away. And hopefully, you can take that message to Hartford. And I'd be, love to talk further about that away from this board meeting. But those are some of the things, I think, that the state has to look at seriously.
Well, and if you look at the demographic trends, it's not just in Fairfield, but obviously, there's been a lot of talk about the baby boomers retiring, and the number of, and folks who are living longer, obviously, and they need different types of housing to accommodate ones that are more accessible for folks that may have some difficulty getting around. In light of that, you know, you could argue very convincingly that we need more senior housing, more accessible senior housing, to meet that housing demands, as well as, you know, and the flip side is the younger generations as well. Many of the millennials burden with student loan debt and other costs, or just as a personal lifestyle choice, are delaying purchasing a home. They want to live in apartments or different types of housing. And again, there's some overlap between those disparate, you know, one would think disparate population groups, but in terms of the types of housing that they're looking for, and whether we have adequate opportunities here locally to meet those needs. But, you know, certainly, in light of the senior housing issue, the fact that everyone acknowledges we have an aging population, but we don't, we, by virtue of this law, you only get credit for half a point for each housing unit created, it's difficult to say.
And the challenge with senior housing is twofold. One is that it be affordable, but the second one is that it be senior-friendly and accessible. Now, that's the bigger challenge, and there's a higher price to pay, because it's harder to do that with land available. Steps, garages, access to transportation, I mean, it, to be senior-friendly takes more. So I could argue easily that there, there's got to be at least equal representation in the point system, but there ought to be potentially even more for seniors, because we have to go back now and rebuild that. And one of the challenges in any community like Fairfield is our land is so expensive. We have very little vacant land. The land that exists is expensive. It's hard to build affordable housing on very expensive land. It just, it's, the numbers just don't work, and that's one of the challenges we face, and part of our ongoing discussion with the state.
So may I respond to, in part, I mean, I think that, I just want to be sensitive to, you know, whatever the intentions were in terms of the senior, counting that senior housing as half. And I, we've talked about this here at this table before, how I, and I'm saying it again today, that that need for senior housing that's accessible is so, so huge. But I guess I want to go back to action step number 11, which is continue to educate Fairfield residents on the need for affordable housing. And, you know, there are a lot of ways to define need, but I guess, one piece, and I'd love to hear more about kind of your thoughts about how you're hoping to go about doing that, and putting that into action. But, no, I certainly, I don't think that the state is making a statement, or anyone who passed that law, that somehow seniors are not as valuable. I, and I, but I think that, your comment, I forget exactly what you said, but I think what...
I'll repeat it in a minute. Go right ahead.
Okay. The thing that I think about as an elephant in the room with affordable housing, and something that, besides the issues around costs and the statutes and all that, is the sense of making sure that we have a diverse, not just diverse housing stock, but a diverse community. That we have people who live in our community in, at all income levels, and that that is valuable in and of itself. And I think when we, when Sandy happened, I remember, actually, you were at the mayor's conference, and I was here when Senator Murphy came to tour. And one of the things that I had said then, and actually, Mr. Mayor and the Finance Office did as well, was that one of the tragedies of Sandy is that we now are having a neighborhood that is even less affordable. So the diversity, not just of housing stock... less affordable, so the diversity, not just of housing stock in the neighborhood, but the socioeconomic diversity is lost. And I think that that's something that I don't want us to forget as we educate and talk about this plan, that simply, you know, being able to assure that we have that kind of diversity as much as we can in our community, recognizing, again, I'm going to go back to the market forces piece, while we are also providing for our seniors, providing for needs, recognizing our changing demographics, and, you know, making sure that that happens. And I would, I'm sure that I am going to be having a lot more conversations in my new role, and I look forward to it, and that's why I say you're not going to get rid of me so easily, so.
We don't want to get rid of you, we want you working on these items in Hartford for us. You know, I would think that, there's no question, one of the things, if you look at Storm Sandy, it changed the demographics, it changed the character of our beach area. Because it did that, and, and simply put, it added ten steps to every house because they have to be, we basically made the beach area non-senior, or senior non-friendly, non-senior friendly. Either way, we took a lot of our senior housing stock out. The beach area used to be perfect, capes, ranches, no steps, flat ground, perfect for seniors. Many of my parents' friends retired of the beach area, stayed in the beach area because it was so senior-friendly. We lost all of that. So, one of the challenges for our community is how do we replace that senior-friendly housing stock? What do we do for our seniors to keep them in town? Part of that, obviously, on the financial side, is looking for senior tax relief, but the other side, quite simply, is senior-friendly housing that's accessible to seniors, and the beach area is one place that lost that. We didn't have tremendous amounts of senior-friendly or disabled-friendly housing to begin with, having worked as a Realtor and having gone out to show people houses or condos or apartments that have no steps, zero, very few units in town. All right? If you want an indoor garage along with that, I'm going to suggest there aren't any, but, because it's hard to take somebody who needs help getting around and say, now go shovel around your car or clear the snow off your car when you're doing that. So, when I look at senior-friendly housing, we've got an issue, and I'm going to suggest that, that this whole focus on having it matter on one, which side of the town boundary you're on. My parents moved to a condo in Bridgeport to find more senior-friendly housing. They moved to a place that didn't have any steps, that had covered parking, that had an elevator up to their unit, and three steps max from the elevator door to their unit door. Now, they were literally across the street from Fairfield. To suggest that shouldn't count for Fairfield is absurd. What should matter is affordable housing within access to employment. We have employment opportunities in town, there are some businesses that are bussing people in from New York, all right? We've got a tremendous opportunity for affordable housing right next door in Bridgeport, we've got jobs here that need it, we've got a mayor in Bridgeport who's looking for tax dollars and would be thrilled to have affordable housing projects helping their affordable housing units there that both address his tax need, that we could find, that we have employment need for, and the whole idea that we draw a line down the middle of the street and say it doesn't count if you're on the left side, and it does count on your right side, that's not taking a very holistic approach to this, and our entire region should be working together. In fact, there's initiative among the mayors and first electmen's in the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council to do just that, so that hopefully we'll bring a more broad-based plan back to you and enlist the help of our state representatives from all six towns involved, so that we have a larger voice in Hartford to basically change the paradigm. What we should be worried about is housing for people. What we should be worried about is housing within a reasonable commute of jobs. That does the best for jobs, it does the best for the economy, it does the best for people. And we've taken a very stringent and bureaucratic approach to this, frankly, which hasn't helped affordable housing in the fifteen years that eight thirty G has been around, and isn't doing it today. So, it, I think there's a lot of room for discussion on this going forward, but I do applaud the action items that you've come up with out of this plan, I think they're very doable, and I think that you've taken a very creative approach to this, it looks like you've learned from other communities and incorporated that here and given Fairfield a chance to maintain its leadership role in addressing these issues. So, thank you for that.
Just wanted to take one opportunity to respond, I think, to the question that I heard from Selectman McCarthy-Behi, and that's in terms of our, how do we go about keeping the public informed or to better educate the public about these particular issues? And I think there were a couple of different ways that we envisioned doing that. One is, certainly, in the body of the report, there was discussion about creating a knowledge base that would reside on the town's website, which we've already created. We would continue to provide additional materials so the public can better educate themselves on these issues. And then, secondly, and probably more importantly, I think, the plan itself serves as a good tool by which we can continue to educate folks, and rather than the plan, as Steve mentioned, it's supposed to be a living, breathing document. So, what we envision is this, the way that you charged us, the committee, with producing an action plan gives us an opportunity to come back to you and to other boards and bodies and report back each year on progress in terms of implementing or achieving the goals outlined in this plan, and tweaking the plan as, as circumstances dictate. So, I think that, really, that's an opportunity to continue the discussion, rather than just put aside and disappear for twenty-five years until we're ready to do a next, next update. It really is a plan by which then it's built in, there is a reporting mechanism in place, or certainly an expectation that somebody's going to be implementing this and reporting back on what we've been able to accomplish. So, I know that's a, that's a, that's a very challenging, daunting task, but I think the committee hopefully, and the rest of the boards and commissions that we're going to hopefully enlist as, as supporters are up to that. And I did want to make one other comment on the strength as diversity, there is, there is strength in the diversity of communities, socioeconomic as well as housing diversity. I think the 1988 plan actually stated that issue best in terms of, and I don't think we wanted to take away from that, because that was one of the things that I, when I came to work for the town, read that plan, it really was ahead of its time, and the recognition of the folks who actually put that plan together, that we need to provide for that type of diversity, that's what makes a healthy community. I think, you know, that's why we incorporated the 1988 plan into this report and appended it to the document, because we thought many of the statements that were made in that report are true today as they were then, so we thought it was very important to pay homage to that group that came before us.
I would also point out, and if you ask most Realtors, they will point out, that there is a greater range of value of homes and housing options in Fairfield than in almost any other town in Fairfield County. Certainly Stanford, Norwalk, and might provide a broader range in some respects, but Fairfield, if you look at the towns, certainly is a leader in terms of housing options across the economic spectrum.
Yes, we should be recognized what we have already, the strengths that we do have as a community. That doesn't mean that we need to rest on our laurels, so to speak, and we certainly improve upon that, but there, we certainly do have a diverse housing stock already, it could be more diverse, obviously, in meeting particularly the needs of folks that have more modest incomes in particular, but we do have a diverse housing stock to begin with.
All right. Any further comments or questions from the board?
One last. I wanted to echo Selectman Kylie's and the first selectman's comments, and thanks. I actually remember when you went from being a task force to a committee, I actually was on the RTM at that point, and Steve, you've been there all through this process, and just have been a leader, and I want to thank you as well as the other members and the members of the public who joined you as well. It truly has been an amazing effort that you have undertaken, and I am really grateful for this, and looking forward to continuing to work on this together.
Good job. We need you. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Jonathan.
The only thing that we would ask is, we wouldn't necessarily ask for you to add it to the agenda today, but at some point, the support of this, the endorsement of this board would be very meaningful in terms of our conversations with others, because that does send a powerful signal that we have your support and backing for this, so.
Why don't you prepare the proper endorsement, then, we can take it up at our next meeting?
Thank you. Okay, we'll do that.
All right. Moving on to item fourteen, from the Director of Information Technology. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Information Technology. Resolve that the Town of Fairfield's Board of Selectmen hereby endorses a regional performance incentive program grant proposal to fund the capital cost of connecting the Town of Fairfield's central administrative facility to the Nutmeg Network. And further resolve that Michael C. Tetro, first selectman of the Town of Fairfield, is hereby authorized to act on this endorsement by signing all necessary agreements, taking all necessary actions related to this proposal, to enter into a binding agreement with the Office of Policy and Management according to the terms of said grant program. May I have a motion to accept?
So would I.
A second. Second. Mr. Leslie, can you give us some of the details?
I'd just like to start off with saying Jim Swift here has been instrumental in getting this done and putting, pulling this project together, and I'm going to start with the introduction and sort of the overview, and he'll be able to answer any technical questions you have that comes up. But before that, I would like to congratulate Craig Kimball on becoming Employee of the Year. He was working with our department up until last month, he is a very hard worker, and he had his well-deserved award. And then, the second thing I'd like to cover is the fact that I worked with Mark Barnhart on the RFP that was put out by the six towns, six towns was it?
Now we're up to forty-four towns.
Okay. To encourage fiber in the towns to get high-speed internet to residents and to the commercial sector. I want you to be clear that what I'm about to talk about is not that, that is just simply a thing of the town saying, yes, commercial people, we will help you along, we will encourage you, we'll do what we can from the town's point of view to encourage getting connections. This is a different beast, so don't be confused by the two of them. Okay? With that, moving forward. A little history, the Nutmeg Network is a recently combined network technically and administratively by the state of Connecticut from the pre-existing public safety data network that was in place to connect the police and fire departments and the Connecticut Education Network, the CEN Network. They brought those two technically, and they connected them technically, two different networks, connected technically, and then they also brought it under one administration called the Nutmeg Network now. Over the last couple of years, the state of Connecticut, when they did this over the last couple of years, they've connected the two networks, the public safety data network and the CEN network, and they've allowed municipal connections just recently because a lot of the GMS managers, the IT managers in Connecticut made a point of, hey, you've talked to the public safety people, and you've talked to the education people, but you didn't talk to the municipal people, and a lot of the municipal people are running the networks and running the town computers, and why didn't you talk to them? So, they have done that, and they are allowing connections, and that's partly what we're talking about here, and then they've also done, opened up the network to commercial interests that have a reason to connect to the network. One example is, if we wanted to do off-site backups, we could connect to a commercial agency through the network and put our backup tapes out there on the network. So, if you'd like to see the physical network, you can go to the web address that's listed on the sheet there, and it covers a lot of Connecticut amazingly, and that, a lot of that work was done in the last couple of years, and what this will do for us in specific. What we are talking about here is a connection between Fairfield University, one of the CEN points of presence, to the Fairfield Woods Library, which is our disaster recovery site, and it will also let us to connect, it, our disaster recovery site, which is also connected to our town network, so it makes it so we can connect the whole town infrastructure there. Oh, and, and one of the big reasons we're doing this is because the library, the library's connection to CEN currently is coming through the Board of Ed, and it has been a troublesome network, it has caused issues with routing, and this will also save us money over the long run. The grant forms before you are, the, in the email was, needs Mike Tetro's signature, it's the first document, the next document after this cover sheet, and it's the one that says that you're going to accept, we're going to go move forward for the forty-two thousand dollar grant. The second document is a document that just says, not, not just the first selectman, but the town itself is aware of the fact that we're going for this grant, is what this, the meaning of the, the reason for the second document. And then the third document is the cost that we're going to be incurring for this connection over, yearly cost over the time, and that's approximately three thousand dollars, it's broken down quarterly there, but it's about three thousand dollars a year for this connection, which is a lower price and, from what we're doing now, but we're going to have, it's going to take a while for us to transition and see some of those savings over the time as we do this. So, with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Jim, and if you have any questions on the technicality, and I do have a, a physical diagram of the connection if you're interested, that was the before.
If we ask the questions on the commitment and contract that we're signing, should we hold those, or do you want to take some of those down?
No, we can take them down.
One, is this a multi-year agreement, we talk three thousand dollars, is that...
For five years. We didn't want to, the original one was for, the one that they were sort of proponing in the, in the beginning was twenty years, but we didn't want to do twenty years, we wanted to do five years, and that would be the eight hundred bucks a month, because of the fact that the, our wide-area network contract is coming up in the middle of 2016, so we didn't want to be totally locked in for a long time with something that would not, not help us as much as it should have.
So, this is a proposal for us to commit to a five-year agreement?
Right.
And that would lock us into spending three grand a year. Is that currently in your budget for the first year, or where does this sit?
This is going to take a while, and I've got a little bit of extra money that I can probably use in my budget if we turn it up before July, but I was expecting it to come online around July, and it is in my new budget proposal for the following year.
Okay. If, in your, saying, what's the termination? We want to opt out of this at any point. Are we locked into five years once we sign up? Is there any way to get out?
We are pretty well locked in, I think there is a termination fee, I would have to double-check on that, but I don't see any extreme reason for us to do this, this is the way the future is going, it's just that we might want to shift it around or change it a little bit.
Okay, well, part of what I'm, I'm trying to get to is that making sure that as we go before this, is there, what I'm looking for is something in front of us that says it's three thousand dollars a year for five years, I don't see that laid out here.
I can get that to you.
Okay, because it's, it's that agreement that we're, in essence, we're approving, if I understand...
This is for the grant, so this, this will be approving for the grant, which is the pricing of the stuff. We actually have the option to go out and quote from different vendors, this is the state's recommended vendor, which is probably what we'll do, but we can, that, that, those specifics are going to come next.
Okay, what I'm trying to get clear on is, what are we approving today, and what are we, in essence, agreeing to down the road? Do you have a...
What you're proving today is the first document that says we want the forty-two thousand that the state, the state put the quotes together for us for these documents.
Okay, so which, which document is that that says we want the forty-two thousand?
The, you do not have that document, but I can get that document for you. It's a very involved document, and it's not, it...
Is there a timeline for the grant, a deadline?
Right, it's, it's this December. For, for signing this part of it, acceptance of the grant is a second, second process of, when we, we're applying to say, yes, we want to do it...
The application.
Right.
Yeah, the application.
And so, we're not being obligated at this point in time, this is just saying we want to move forward with the process, and see it.
Okay, I think that was a key point I was trying to get to, what are we actually agreeing to right now, and what are we obligated to, and what can we unobligate ourselves to?
Right, we're not obligated to the five-year part of the contract at this point in time, that comes, that's the next step.
Is there any money we're agreeing to spend with the approval of this resolution?
No.
All we're asking for, excuse me, is to apply for the grant, that's all we're asking for right now is your permission to apply for that grant, and then if the grant is... then if the grant is awarded, we can then decide to take it or leave it at that point.
At that point, it will come back through the process, and back through the body. So today, this is, because this is required as a part of the application, that's why you're here. If this were not required, as is the case with certain grants, then you wouldn't be here. You would have potentially sent the grant request in, and we would have to then decide as a town whether to accept it. In this case, you're seeking the permission of the board to have the first selectmen sign so that we can move forward with the process.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm understanding of what you're saying, but I don't think that's what I'm reading.
That's my question. Please.
Okay. I mean, we're not reading the thing word for word. It does talk about the endorsement, but to sign all necessary agreements and taking all necessary actions related to this proposal, to enter into a binding agreement with the OPM, et cetera. So I'm just.
The deadline of December 31st is actually for the document that says that the Board of Selectmen agrees to pursue the grant. That's the first deadline. The next deadline for the document you're talking to, I would think, is the middle of February?
Right. And that I understand, and I understand that typically the first step in one of these processes is to authorize the first selectmen to enter into applying for the grant. I get that, but that's not what I'm reading.
Yeah?
Yeah, please.
You're saying essentially that the further resolved section of the resolution is the concern, in other words, the first part? Am I getting that right? That the further resolved is what's the concern, and not really, you know, the acting on agreements and taking action, the initial part of that resolution is?
Well, certainly the second part is beyond the scope of the conversation I just heard. The first part is closer to that, that's correct, to what we're hearing. Even that first part talks about endorsement and agreeing to fund the capital costs of connectivity, et cetera. So even that is, I think, above and beyond just the application for a grant, is it not? Or am I reading it too literally?
I mean, I think you could read it, you could read it that way. I could see that, but it's also, it endorses a grant proposal.
In terms of to clarify that wording, is the grant proposal that we're endorsing before us at all? Is that? This says the resolve, the Town of Fairfield First Selectmen hereby endorses a regional performance. Is there, is there something that says?
See just below number four there on the Notice of Intent document?
Desktop.
Yeah, it says, yeah, it says desktop estimate of costs associated with this quest. So it's a rough estimate of what it's going to be, and then we go back and you come back. So I think you're right, actually, on the agenda, it probably should be modified.
It reads beyond that, is what it does.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying it's not a worthy grant or a right path to go down, but the agenda item kind of skips that part and goes on to other components. Without slurring these, okay, go on.
Except for what we're doing and what they're asking for, is the permission for the first selectmen. They're asking for that from us as a board, to give the first selectmen permission, which that language in the second part of the resolution says, he's authorized to act by signing. The problem is in that, by signing part is we kind of need, I think, but the problem is the second part, that's the enter into the binding agreement. We're not, we're not wanting to enter into a binding agreement.
Correct.
Today, yes.
Right, right. Is the second part of that resolution important?
I don't think so. This is the, this is just saying, we want to pursue the grant, and we want to see what it is, and we're serious about it, and we want to, you know, get the final dollars and the real quotes. And actually, I think you probably have to pass it by the Board of Finance and the RTM, too, at that point. At this point, you don't need the Board of Finance and the RTM.
We do when we're going to spend money.
Right. This isn't spending money now. This is saying, we're very interested, we want to proceed, and we want to see what the money's going to actually really be.
Sure.
Would you entertain a motion?
Depends on what the motion is.
The motion would be to simply strike the language from further resolved, actually, excuse me, in the first paragraph, after the word "network," and instead of a semicolon and a period, and strike "and" and everything following.
All right. Janet, we moved and seconded this overall motion, correct?
Hold on just a moment. Yes.
Okay, so the motion here is before us. You're making a motion to amend it? Is there a second?
I'll set a lit.
Yes, yes. Does, do you have permission? Does that amendment still accomplish what you're trying to accomplish today?
I think so. It makes sense to me.
All right. Then, that makes me more comfortable, because it, I'm less worried about all the other wording and copies of documents. This is just saying that we allow for the grant proposal. They may reject us, we may reject the grant proposal when it comes back.
Correct.
But we're still in good shape. And then we can give Mr. Leslie and Mr. Swift time to get put together a bit more details at the point that that's appropriate. I would suggest, there seems to be a timetable in here that it's got to go to our legislative body by 3/31. When do you hear back from them? Sorry. Are we just, sorry, Mr. Leslie, I'm getting ahead of myself. Any further questions on the amendment, the amendment only? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the item as amended stands before us. Mr. Leslie, or Mr. Swift, I don't need to, does that give you the time to do this? And can you get, if we're going to have to have the RTM vote on this by March 31st, you need to check the dates, but I believe that may have to be on the February.
Agenda.
Board of Selectmen agenda to go to the Board of Finance in March.
Right, and then at the RTM.
And you need to check the Board of Finance schedule, because we get into budget season, and I'm not sure if they have a regularly scheduled meeting in March.
That would be the point that the grant was approved, though, correct? We're asking for the money to do it?
Well, if the Board of Finance doesn't have a regularly scheduled, it's whatever this, whatever this requirement is, it says here, 3/31. It may mean getting, literally, to the Board of Selectmen in late January, Board of Finance in February, so goes the RTM in February.
Yeah, that would, we actually, I went through this process last year, and that's what hung me up, and so I'm very aware of that at this point.
Okay. If you could please map out those dates, and the Board of Finance, I believe, just published their March calendar, the budget sessions out, so now you can check that. You couldn't do that previously.
Yeah.
Good. Sorry.
Question?
Yes.
Okay. In rereading this now, in light of this conversation, this form, it says the language is to be completed by any municipality or municipal government that is interested in applying for a grant. And then, under number six, it reads, submit a resolution by the legislative body of the municipality endorsing the Nutmeg Network connection application in order to complete the application requirements.
Right. That's when we're going to say, yes, we want the money, and we are, and that's got to be done by March, like what Tetro was talking about, that we have to get in front of the three bodies by that time.
But in our case, because of the meeting, I think it's by the end of February.
Right. Yeah.
Either way, there's a deadline.
Yeah, just, it sounds like the resolution here on page, it lists it at the page right after that one. To act on a endorsement by signing all necessary agreements, take on all necessary actions related to this proposal, to enter into a binding agreement, so in order to do the binding agreement, it sounds like all the dollars and financial commitments have to be made.
Right.
So that means we're going to need to know what all the dollars are and the financial commitments before.
Like you said, they approve what we're saying here to them, and then they'll come back and say, you know, we'll add the actual detailed dollars at that point in time.
And then based on how the dates work, that's either the second Board of Selectmen meeting in January, or the first Board of Selectmen meeting in February, if there's enough time to get it to the Board of Finance after that.
Okay. So just for clarity's sake, this page here that Mr. Tetro was just referring to, I believe, this is the page that would get signed in February, March timeframe, to move forward with both the resolution, the commitment, and the financial commitments. This is, we aren't authorizing, what we're agreeing to today is not, is or is not authorizing the signing of this document. It's not, then I'm good. Okay.
So what document are we agreeing, authorizing to sign?
The first one. The one with the numbers one through seven. The Notice of Intent.
Got you, got you.
And that's exactly what it is. It's just a Notice of Intent.
Beautiful. Thanks. That was where I was tripped up on those two documents. Thank you.
Any further questions, or are we ready to vote?
For you.
On the item as amended?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Look forward to seeing you soon.
That's right.
Yep.
Kristen?
This is it, guys.
Item 15. You get to make the next two motions.
To consider an act upon the tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector, and the amount recommended, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have an amendment. It'll be my last amendment here, that we add the amount $8,440.87 to.
We have a second.
Should we?
No.
Second.
If you want their money back, appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, we have to vote on the item as amended.
Oh, sorry. We did the motion, we did the amendment. The item as amended is before us.
It is.
Are we ready to vote? Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Down to adjourn. Any further comments?
No.
You didn't read your card.
Oh, was I supposed to read?
Read your card.
Who motioned second at the adjournment?
You haven't done it yet. I haven't done it yet.
He told me I have to read my card first.
I must be tired.
That's really cool card.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you want me to cry again? Oh, thank you. That was really nice. Oh. I don't want to cry again.
Very well said.
Very nice.
All right. After the card reading, may we, in fact, have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations.
You're getting.